Good evening, I'd like to welcome you all to the Board of Education, May 30th, 2019. And I'd like to read live the salute and plaid. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Statement of notice, please.
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, I put notice that this meeting has been provided as follows: On January 7th, 2019, it was considered a home new tribune, star ledger, local source, and a perk of the municipality. By state law, there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items of this agenda, the Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to herein as is allowed in the regular schedule of monthly board meetings under the Sunshine Law.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Shahada?
Here.
Mrs. Gabiano?
Present.
Mrs. Berg?
Here.
Mr. Bergano?
Here.
Ms. Gilliam?
Present.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Kozak?
Here.
Mr. Maginello?
Present.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Here.
Can you approve the minutes? Start the minutes from the last one, please. Uh, motion? Roll call.
Mr. Shahad?
Yes.
Mrs. Gabiano?
Yes.
Mrs. Berg?
Yes.
Mr. Bergano?
Yes.
Ms. Gilliam?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Kozak?
Yes.
Mrs. Maginello?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes. Yes, she attends before. Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Board members and community members. We're not expecting a cheering crowd with signs, but I do appreciate it. Hope I get a peep out that... If you have not done so already, please take note of my official superintendent's report, which is a newsletter that's published each month on the day of our Board of Education meetings. There are copies on the stage. It's available in print tonight, it'll be sent out electronically through email and on social media tomorrow. And it's an interactive newsletter, so if you see it online, you can click on it, you get a rundown on recent news with links to a larger story, you get pictures, you get videos about all the amazing things that are going on in this awesome school district. Uh, Mr. President, tonight we have two presentations, so at this time I would like to ask the Board if they would step off the desk and join me down below. Good evening, everyone, once again. So, my favorite part about being the superintendent of schools, of course, is being around kids. I love kids. It's always been my mantra, from when I was a teacher to the time I was a principal, my morning announcements, it would be "Love the children!" After I woke everybody up with the "Good Morning, Linden High!" I wake them up, and I tell them it's a beautiful day at Linden High School, the sun is shining every day, and it's a beautiful place to be, and Linden is a wonderful place to be. And tonight, I get to honor a wonderful student and a wonderful educator. So, let me begin with our student. So, as many of you may know, we have two students in our district who have been suffering from cancer, two very serious illnesses. And a few weeks ago, one of our incredible teachers, Ms. Kim Cathalis, one of our technology teachers, she can get around her colleagues. She organized and planned a fundraiser with a magician and an illusionist. And the goal was to raise money for our students and also for the Valley Fund. Many donations came in, not just from people who attended the show, but from people who just wanted to do right. And I believe they have raised over $5,000 from this. What we have found, and I know it to be true in Linden my whole life, is that when we spread kindness, it is contagious. And so, tonight, it is my honor to recognize one of our students for an outstanding act of kindness and generosity. Before we do that, I'm gonna ask Ms. Cathalis to come up and explain what this young lady did.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, so I planned the fundraiser because, as some of you may know, I'm a cancer survivor. And... This town was at every doorstep. I had meals delivered to my house every single night for six months from the town. And there was a day, it was something like a croptosis, there was a day that, it was just one of those really bad days. It just was a bad chemo treatment, it was a bad reaction, it was just an awful weather day. And I remember sitting in my house and saying, "God, if you just get me through this, I swear, I will do everything I can to pay it forward." And I feel like it's their karma if I don't do that. So, um, every year I've been trying to raise the bar. I've been selling, like, attire t-shirts, they kinda went viral around the district. Um, I sold, I think, over 200 t-shirts. And so, each year it's just been getting better and better. So, I have wonderful students that I teach, and I was so excited with the fundraiser, and then all of a sudden I get a phone call. And it said, "Ms. Cathalis, I need to, I need to tell you something." And I said, "Okay." And, um, it was Anna's mom, and she said to me, "I just gotta tell you this." And I says, "Okay, what happened?" She says, "Well, it was Anna's birthday over the weekend, and it was the weekend of the show. So, the show was Friday, and I guess her birthday was that weekend." So, she really wanted to attend the show, and she couldn't attend the show. And she seen the commercial on Channel 7, which I don't know if any of you saw, I was on Channel 7. So, um, they, she saw the commercial, and she said, "Mom, for my birthday, I don't want anyone to bring me presents. I want them to give me money so that I can give it to Ms. Cathalis to give it to the fund that she's raising." And she raised $450. As a teacher, there is nothing more that I can teach these kids than just the love of people and inspiring them. That's all, every day, I'm like, if you don't remember my lessons, okay, but I'd like to be inspired. And so, she has inspired me to, this is kinda what it's all about, and I'm so, so proud of her. And the best part of it is, she is just so, like, "Yep, that's what I did." And her mom says, um, this is what she wants me to do, she just wants to help people. And so, I think at six years old, she's setting the example for every adult in this room, and I could not be more proud of her. So, Anna, come on up.
Anna, I've got a certificate for you. It's really nice, and it has a gold sticker on it.
Wanna come up and talk?
And it's okay, and it's okay, she does. But Anna, what we want you to know is that we know that you did this not to receive any recognition. We know you did this from the bottom of your heart because you're a good person. And we love you for that. Maybe I got you a little more than a certificate. We got you lots of Linden goodies, too. You sure you don't wanna come take a picture and get into the newspaper?
Do you wanna see the most popular item? Also, I asked her, "What is your favorite Disney princess?" We almost kind of obsessed with you. And she said Belle. So, I guarantee you, there's a Belle doll in this one.
Mom, you're doing something right.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
Mom, maybe, maybe when she gets home, and she's opening some gifts, if you happen to take some pictures and get that to us, that'd be great. It's okay, Mom, no problem. One more round of applause, please. And so, one of the other great things that I get to do as superintendent is that I get to, I get to recognize outstanding teachers. And tonight, it gives me the greatest pleasure to recognize honestly one of the most outstanding teachers that I have encountered, not only in my 21 years in the district, but in my years of schooling here in Linden. And I have to tell you, I had to twist his arm to come here tonight because this man does not seek accolades, does not want recognition. But when I tell you what he's done, I think you will be amazed. I did not have the pleasure to have Mr. McMahon as a teacher. Mr. McMahon was the teacher that everybody wanted. He was the teacher who had high expectations for you, but also built a relationship with you so that you would want to meet those expectations. And he was also a pretty cool guy for a teacher. You know, coming from a high school student at the time. So, that was my perspective of him as a student. I graduated high school, I come back to Linden High School four years later, and now Mr. McMahon and I are colleagues. And then his legend begins to grow in my mind. He was still a cool guy, but I started to see him a different perspective, uh, that of a respected colleague, one I could learn from, one whose class I could visit. We shared students, and they would tell me about how great Mr. McMahon was, and I would be like, "What about me?" And then I had the opportunity later on in my career to become a vice principal, later on as principal. And Mr. McMahon will tell you, I would visit his classroom often, 'cause it was a cool place to be. It was a place where students could sit around and talk, but you knew they were learning. They were comfortable enough, and they respected their teacher, and never, ever crossed any boundaries. Mr. McMahon still, to this day, has that ability to connect to students. And he's retiring this year after 33 years in our district. So, we don't normally recognize every teacher that retires. We'll give them a nice resolution on the agenda, but we don't go on and on about how great they are. So, why is it different tonight for Mr. McMahon? Because here's the thing I admire most about him. The most dedicated professional that I've ever encountered. How do you measure dedication? Ladies and gentlemen, the man has not missed a single day of work in 33 years. Mr. McMahon, we'd be honored if you say a few words.
I'd just like to say, it's been my privilege to work in this district for 33 years. The staff, the faculty, everyone has always supported me. That's why it's been very easy for me to come here every single day for 33 years. I knew if I needed any help with anything, I could always count upon anybody for anything, from students, secretaries, fellow teachers, administrators, I was always supportive. And in addition to that, the kids. It's just been my privilege to, you know, have you trust me with your kids for 33 years, so I've always tried to fulfill those expectations and do my best. So, thank you.
At one of your surprise parties, I had one of your former students who wanted to come and say a few words about you. Justina, are you here? By the way, we could've had a line of thousands of students that come, but Justina was a bill.
Good evening, Dr. Albertozzi, members of the Board of Education, and distinguished guests. Thank you for inviting me to tonight's ceremony and for giving me the opportunity to say a few words. It is truly an honor to reflect on and publicly thank Mr. McMahon for the impact he has had, not only on me, but I'm sure on countless others throughout the years. It's actually a bit ironic that this public recognition is taking place at all, not because he doesn't deserve it, because, trust me, he does, but because Mr. McMahon has never been one to seek praise for his work. For him, it's never been about the trophies, the plaques, the certificates, the accolades. It's always been about the students. He's simply done whatever he could to teach, to touch the hearts and the minds of his pupils, and to help others deflecting any intention that ever came his way. And by the way, if anybody is planning a surprise party for him, you should also plan for him to not attend. So, the first time I actually met him, I remember it like it was yesterday. It was that Walmart of all places. My brother and I happened to get lined behind him at check out, and the two of them engaged in small talk while I tried to kinda stay back and go unnoticed. But my brother, of course, did the whole "this is my little sister" introduction, and so my efforts were futile. But Mr. McMahon greeted me with a warm smile, a few kind words, and none of those typical "you have a lot of expectations and reputations to live up to." Thanks for that. Our interaction wasn't long, but I kinda sensed right off the bat that there was good things to know from him and to learn from him. But as soon as he walked away, my brother explained that that was weird, and I was very confused, so I asked him, "What do you mean by that?" And so, my brother gave me a quick rundown of who Mr. McMahon is. Always wears corduroy pants, a white shirt, and a tie. Doesn't change.
Very pretty.
Hair style a little beard from the 70s. Hasn't changed. He's really into music, especially The Beatles, Pink Floyd, and the like. Hasn't changed, well, I'll get to him with that in a minute. He's got a witty sense of humor, but a lot of humility about him. Never misses school, as we just saw. Oh, and he'll be your English teacher during junior year. At least, that's what my brother told me. So, seeing my brother, seeing my brother interact with him was great, but he was really taken back by the fact that Mr. McMahon was outside of his teacher uniform and outside of his school. I mean, he was wearing a t-shirt, some shorts, a baseball cap or semester disguise, and we were in danger zones, he would find it on his own. But, you know, the rest of what my brother said was pretty much true and on point. He has the largest music library of anyone I know, and it's not limited strictly to any one genre. You can think of anything and ask him for anything, he probably has it. I mean, he's got classical music, jazz, Polish Christmas carols, and even a So Buttons CD somewhere in there. For anyone who doesn't know what So Buttons is, uh, there was an old girl's band that formed when I was in high school, and they didn't go very far, but he bought their CD. Or just got it, I don't really know. Um, anyway, you'll find his music on cassette tapes, vinyls, CDs, but don't ask anything for an MP3 file, 'cause that's way too 21st century for him. He also has a huge collection of guitars and other instruments, probably we all acquired in English town or some local garage sales, for a dollar, or five, or less. Um, and he will definitely play them as well as he can fix them. Um, and he will talk about those subjects endlessly, but he will enlighten you in everything and every detail that you can think of. I actually have The Beatles channel programmed in my car radio as a homage to Mr. McMahon for the inspiration that he's given me over the years. If you're ever feeling down, Mr. McMahon knows just what to say or do to lift your spirits. He's always ready to listen and to give advice or back a joke. He may not be a dad, but his, his collection of dad jokes is pretty extensive and quite impressive. Honestly, a plus count, common tax has been my counselor, my confidant, a shoulder to cry on, and I mean that literally in every way possible, a problem solver, an eternal optimist, an idea bank, a tennis coach, a personal cheerleader, and my biggest supporter. I mean, he wears many hats, not today. Um, whether I was dealing with injuries, problems in school, problems at home, problems at work, he was always there, helping me offer compassion, a sense of stability, and a sense of reason, all of which I needed at the time. But also, if I was celebrating an accomplishment, no matter how big or how small, he was right there celebrating with me, and it was as genuine joy as I could ever experience from anyone. Um, you know, at this point, I'm pretty sure if I don't share any of my accomplishments or updates with him, I'm in trouble more so than I am with my parents. And yes, you did hear me say that correctly, that he was my tennis coach and has been my tennis coach. He may look very unassuming, but don't let that fool you, because he will take no mercy on anyone on those tennis courts. It doesn't matter if he's playing left-handed, if he's healthy or injured, if he's playing against one or against many, he will literally win every single match. Maybe not every single game, but he will win. Um, my plan to pin there stops with a handful of individual games or service aces that I've never managed to get against him, but I still chalk that up to luck more so than to skill, and that's not, not intended to be a plan against his teaching. But speaking of teaching, missing school was never an option for him. No car? No problem. He'd either bike walk or use any means necessary to get from point A to point B. And it didn't matter if the trip would take an extra hour or if the weather was less than ideal. He spent the night in the hospital with kidney stones, and he would not take that as reason to not come to school. He figured he would just take a nap after work or catch up and sleep on the weekends. Um, getting into a car accident on his morning commute was just simply a reason to come in two minutes before the bell rang, as opposed to a typical 30 to 45 minutes early. So, yeah, I mean, personally, like, I would not be able to do my job if something like that happened, but Mr. McMahon was just untried on these things. And I don't really know what's more impressive, the fact that he's never missed a day of school, or the fact that he's never asked anyone for help, even when he wasn't feeling his 100% best. But the other aspect of it is that staying late after school was also the norm for him and not the exception to the rule. I mean, I would pass by the high school multiple times and see only one car in the parking lot, McMahon's. Um, students, both current and former, always knew that they could go to him after school and talk about, you know, projects they were working on, whether they were for his class or other classes, get help with assignments, get help with college essays, come back and visit, just chat about life, get some advice on, you know, career perspectives, classes, things like that. His door was always open. Um, I would always pop in and say hi, and it would be someone getting a guitar lesson, or talking about sports, or talking about theater, just anything. The classroom was always bustling. Before, after, during school, it was always there. But at the end of the day, all of this just shows his true character. His passion for teaching and the dedication he asks for his students are second to none, and there's literally nothing that can stop him from doing his job and doing it well. So, the one thing that my brother got wrong in all of that was that Mr. McMahon would not be my English teacher of junior year of high school. I was actually fortunate to have him for two years as part of the IU program. And I, um, he was our advisor for the extended SE portion of the program. And even though I ended up writing a science paper in the program, which he's not, you know, the science guy around here, he was still able to provide me tremendous help in terms of my writing, my grammar, my formatting, my style, and yet he kind of accustomed to the different styles that I'm up using in college and further on my career. And beyond that, he was always helping me with my admission essays, my scholarship applications, and then even my papers in college and grad school, and even now with my work presentations, he's still helping me out, bouncing up ideas, getting me some, you know, help with set instructions and things like that. The best part about all that, though, is I'm not the only one. Ask anyone who's ever encountered him, they're gonna tell you the same exact thing. So, McMahon truly, you know, embodies a great teacher. He seeks, he has, he sets high expectations for all his students, but he does so in a manner that's very individual and unique to each person. His concern is reaching far beyond what each student's performance is in his classroom. He wants to make sure that they're set for success in life. He's knowledgeable, enthusiastic, compassionate, selfless, dedicated. I mean, I could go on and on and on. So, all I'm gonna say is congratulations on the youngster for retiring, and thanks for all that you've done for me.
We got the clock, because I'm not sure what it's... And finally tonight, ladies and gentlemen, I will close my superintendent's report on a very personal note. As many of you know, my resignation as superintendent of this amazing district is on the agenda. I would like to read my letter of resignation, which was sent to the Board of Education this morning. Dear Board of Education members, I write this letter with a humble heart and a deep sense of gratitude to all of the Board of Education members, past and present, who I've had the opportunity to work with as I offer you my resignation. My last day of appointment with the Linden Board of Education will be June 30th. When I was appointed superintendent of this district, it was a dream fulfilled. As I end my 21 years with this district, I leave with nothing but great memories and love for all. I would like to take an opportunity to thank all the students, teachers, administrators, staff, parents, and community members that I have had the privilege to serve for 21 years. Linden is truly an exceptional community that I love with all my heart. It's a difficult decision to leave somewhere that you love and a place that you've known your whole life. But I know in my heart, it's time for a new challenge. Please know that if necessary, I will make myself available to the district to transition with the new superintendent once appointed. And please know that Linden will always be in my heart. Sincerely, me. I didn't realize there would be a cheering section tonight for signs, but I'm really, really appreciative. I know that not all of you came here today for me, but for those of you who did, I love you. And that's my phone ringing right now. I'm going to have to turn it off. Let me just say a couple more things, and then we will move on with our meeting. The decision to resign from this district was a difficult one, but was made by me solely. I don't have any pressure from this Board of Education to leave. I don't have any pressure from anyone to leave. I can stay here as long as I want, but I know that in my heart, it's just time for a change. So please don't believe anything that you might read or hear and know that this decision is mine, because it's what's right for me at this point in my career. We've done some amazing things in this district, and the last six years, I feel that we've come a long way. And I'm just so thankful that I had the opportunity to serve. So to the Lyndon community, I want to thank you for letting me serve you, and thank you for allowing me to love your children, and I will truly miss all of you. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Okay, the attorney, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, present the following motion to the Lyndon Board of Education for approval. I move item number one and ask for a second.
Second.
Rocco, please.
Mr. Shahada?
Yes.
Mrs. Baviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Bargano?
Yes.
Ms. Gilliam?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Cozak?
Yes.
Mr. Maginello?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes. Uh, education committee, uh, please.
Education committee, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools and the assistant superintendent, present the following motion to the Lyndon Board of Education for approval. I'd like to, one through... thirty-two minutes, but we ask for a second.
Second. Rocco.
Mr. Shahada?
Yes.
Mrs. Baviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Bargano?
Yes.
Ms. Gilliam?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Cozak?
Yes.
Ms. Maginello?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes. Uh, personal finance?
Personal finance committee, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, present the following motions to the Lyndon Board of Education for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Cozak. The district was deeply saddened to hear of the passing of two of our former teachers. Many of you knew Mr. Armando Conde, who was a, I would say, a living legend here in Lyndon. Mr. Conde was a teacher of Spanish for 41 years in our district. He started in 1966. He also was the founder of the Lyndon High School chapter of the Spanish National Honor Society and advisor for the Spanish Ski Club. Mr. Conde retired in June of 2007. We're also saddened to hear of the loss of Mr. Jonathan Cantor, who worked for the Lyndon Board of Education as an ASL teacher for 11 years. Mr. Cantor was known as the Scottish bagpipe player, would play his bagpipes around Lyndon High School, which fit really well. So on behalf of the entire district, we offer our most heartfelt sympathies to the family and, oh, I apologize. This was just a recent one. We also learned of the passing of Ms. Edie Penchek, who worked for the Lyndon Board of Education for 21 years. Edie worked as a secretary at Lyndon High School, School 5, and McMathis Middle School. She was just such a kind and generous person and was loved by many. So on behalf of the Lyndon School District, we offer our condolences to the families of those in the board.
I made a motion to move items number one through sixty-nine of the personnel. There's actually an addition to number fourteen, Mark Echo, and then there's a change. Item thirteen, number four, instead of school one, it's at school number two. Can you repeat that, please? On page... item number, um, I, item number fourteen, there's an addition, Mark Echo. That's not yet out.
That was just a, it was a mistake. Sure.
And then under number thirteen, number four, instead of school one, it's at school number two.
What occasion? I'm just going to type out.
Okay.
Yes.
Mrs. Baviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Bargano?
Yes, note number eighteen.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. Johnson? I'm sorry.
Uh, yes and no to number eighteen.
Ms. Cozak?
Yes, to all, except for number eighteen, no.
Ms. Maginello?
Yes, to all, no to number eighteen.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes. What other one's number eighteen? Did that motion pass, Ms. Gilian?
Yes, it did.
Finance, I'm sorry, finance.
Personal finance committee, upon the recommendation of the superintendent administrator, board secretary, present the following motions to the Lyndon Board of Education for approval. I move items one through forty-four and ask for a second.
Second.
Mr. Shahada?
Yes.
Mrs. Baviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Bargano?
Yes, note thirty-four.
No, no, seven, eight.
Note number thirty-four.
Ms. Gilliam?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Cozak?
Yes.
Ms. Maginello?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes. Uh, finance? Building's brown, it's skirt, yes.
The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes. The building's brown, it's skirt, yes.
Okay?
No, no! 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 Counsel?
You have a motion. Uh, you have a second? You have a motion?
I have a motion.
Okay. But what I'm, what I'm saying to you, as far as statute eternally is concerned, you can vote on it. Absolutely. But, uh, as a mandate, absolutely not, due to the fact that it states statutes. But we can vote on it.
Uh, according to our bylaws, we do not need to form an ad hoc committee. I was actually reading about them earlier today.
Well, we can do that. We're not going to determine. I'm not going to determine. I don't know. We're not going to determine.
Our parents and our community deserve transparency.
Okay, local?
Um, Mr. Shahada?
Yes.
Mrs. Baviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Bargano?
I'm abstaining from more of that.
Uh, uh, whoa, whoa. We don't need that. Come on. We're all adults. Please, come on.
Ms. Gillian there?
Hopeless angel.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Kozak?
I'm abstaining.
Mrs. Manganello?
Abstain.
Abstain. Okay. All right.
I'm sorry.
Um, at this time, at this time, we will have closing statements. Uh, mind if I start?
Sure. All right, so, would you mind? I think, would you mind if I started?
Uh, Ms. Baviana?
I'm going to ask for extra time. It has a couple of texts we need to Dr. Robert Tozzi. Um, Mr. Bergano?
Danny? Yes, uh, thank you, uh, Mrs. Baviana. Um, I'm pleased that this was my error. I truly apologize. We have two students who are on the agenda to be recognized as, uh, our valedictorians and salutatorians. Our salutatorian is Peter Zolasny, who you've heard speak earlier. And, uh, in this new school class of twenty nineteen is Musin Khan. I want to make two brief comments. Uh, first of all, I apologize that you didn't get recognized earlier, and I can't believe you actually stayed here for the whole meeting. That's very impressive. Um, it's truly an accomplishment what you've done. I hope you understand how, uh, the, the magnitude of what you've done. Uh, second, I can't remember a time, Mrs. Baviana, can you, where we've had two males? Were you thinking that when they came up? Uh, I don't know what that means, but I've been in this for twenty-one years, and this is the first time I remember a man, two male valedictorian and salutatorian. Um, so I think that's a good thing. I don't know. I'm not sure what it means. It's you, me. Um, you will be, uh, you're being formally recognized by the board tonight, but you will receive, um, some very special things, uh, graduation. So, uh, congratulations to you all. Any board members want to comment, please do.
Okay, absolutely. But we're valedictorian. Our salutatorian is my adopted son, and my, we call him my daughter's twin, and I've known Peter since he was in junior high school. I'm actually honored to have written a letter of recommendation for him for a scholarship, and I am so very proud of the accomplishments that this young man has made over the years. Thank you!
You will be recognized at the Union County Superintendent's Scholarship Breakfast tomorrow morning. Yes? See you there. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to do that. Um, Dr. Robert Tozzi, I do have a couple of people who are not able to attend tonight who sent me messages. Uh, one is our longtime running school board president. Uh, for those of you who know, we always call them Mr. Pres, Brian Russell. Dawn, I can't make it to tonight's meeting. I would like to be there, uh, for Robo, but I have a budget hearing at work. This is a sad day that he's leaving. Dawn, it was a pleasure along with Sue and Lou making him our superintendent. This is a great loss for Linden. Please send in my best wishes this evening. We love you, Robo. From my daughter, who is on a trip today, um, in Gettysburg, along with many of our student ambassadors. Dr. Robert Tozzi, I remember when you were the principal at school nine, and I was in fourth grade. Although it was only one year that we had you, I remember having fun that year, and you were always visiting our classes. I saw you around the schools and various programs during middle school, but it wasn't until the student ambassadors that I got to work with you and sit in your chair. You made me laugh. You believed in me. You didn't treat me as a child, but I know it wasn't just me. It was every student you met, and if you treated the students like this, I could only imagine how you treated the staff in our schools, and maybe that's how it reflects on how they teach us. I'm sad to hear that you will not be at our graduation to congratulate the class of two thousand nineteen upon receiving our diplomas, but always know that you are in our hearts and that the Tigers will always roar for Robo. We love you. Danny from me. As the only board member sitting here who not only promoted you to superintendent, but promoted you to principal, who transferred you three times, um, at school six, I'm sorry. We promoted you from school six for one year as principal, school nine, one year as principal, Linden High School, one year as principal, to assistant superintendent, to superintendent, and it was definitely the best decision that the Board of Education at that time could have made, because we were proud and we were honored to have one of our own move up through the ranks, hearing the stories of your football days. And I didn't know you until really you became principal at school nine, and I was the chairperson of the fifth grade class and gave you headaches over our turkey tracks, but I can tell you how honored we were to move up one of our own through the district, and to have you sitting in that chair has been the greatest honor of our, of my twelve years on this board. You are the third superintendent that I got to work with, and although I love Rocky, you were definitely the best, the most open, the one who went out to the community, who treated our teachers and our students as if they truly mattered, and after the last board meeting, I know that you fight for every single staff member in this school district. You will be missed. I will be at a board meeting in Clifton to tell them that they took one of our own, but I wish you all the best, and I know that what you did here, you will do in Clifton. We love you.
So I wanted to start, uh, to talk about the show that I went
to yesterday. I had the pleasure of attending the forty-fourth Annual All-City Musical and Art Festival, and I just want to say what a wonderful, tremendous job the staff and the students did. What they accomplished, I thought, was truly extraordinary. I really felt like I paid to be at a show. It felt like a live concert, so I just wanted to take the time to thank the parents, the staff, and the students for dedicating their time to coming out in the rain. It was a wonderful turnout. And to Dr. Robert Tozzi, I would like to thank Dr. Robert Tozzi for his years of service. I'm grateful for having the opportunity to learn from you as a student and as a board member. People always gravitate towards you, and I think it's because of your smile. I think that's why you'll be missed dearly. You've made yourself relatable to students by staying here from across the tracks, when we all know that we're in the way of that.
Yeah, I'm living the whole way. I'm not living people.
Working alongside of you has been interesting and insightful. I know you will be missed, but I wish you nothing but luck and hope you stay attached. Thank you again. But I wanted to close with, um, I told my family that you were leaving, and my brothers, my sisters still look shocked, but, uh, my brother Gerv, he wanted me to tell you, thank you so much for helping him and supporting him, and thank you for the laptop. Um, he's using it, and he said there was no way that he would be able to be in school without your help, so thank you.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, Mr. Robert Tozzi, for everything that you did for the school district. I was lucky to have you as my head advisor for the whole senior year of high school here at Linden High School. Um, every day was something new. It was, it was, it was an event every morning coming in, and you were up, you had, everybody was paying attention, and there was just a different story to tell every day, whether it was fooling around, making, cracking jokes, and back and forth between all of us in there, or setting up different projects that we're going to do in the school, and then it really impacted me and my growth throughout my life. Um, thank you once again for everything that you did for me back then and everything that you're doing now. I know you're going to do great things in Clifton. Uh, I do think it is a positive thing for you, just because it is a huge school district. It's double the size of Linden, and it's a really good career move, because you will be touching that many more people and have impacted that many more children, so I'd be lucky to have you there as our superintendent.
Thank you, Danny.
Uh, Kozak?
Hey, Dr. Robert Tozzi. I want to thank you for your time and service within the Linden School District. As people have said, you are leaving behind big shoes to fill, and you're leaving a big legacy behind.
Thank you. I don't know why I'm like you, still, and I'm like she.
I wish you nothing but the best with your own heart. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Shahada?
Thank you. Honestly, this was the hardest thing I've ever had to rank in my life. There were so many things I could have spoken about. We've been through a lot. We confided in each other, not as colleagues, but as brothers. We have a bond and a brotherhood that surpasses our roles here in the district and is something I'm eternally grateful for and will continue to cultivate with you being in Clifton and beyond that. Most people are wondering why you're leaving, and I continuously told people, it's because you did your part here, and it's time to spread your knowledge, love, and support to others, and that you're leaving on your own terms. When you told me you were leaving, I was upset and had many sleepless nights, and that you're going to leave behind all the progress you have made over the past twenty-one years. I was even going to ask you to reconsider, but as a brother, I was thrilled that you would get to start over and help in on the district, and I never want to stand in your way, in the way of your happiness. But at Camp High yesterday, I did ask Robo in the parking lot in Clifton if he did want to reconsider. He politely declined. As I told the people in Clifton on numerous occasions that you had to steal, you are the best educator and leader I have ever worked with, and know you will do great things in Clifton, and that's something that everyone in this room can agree upon. And I also just want you to remember that I am your favorite Muslim board member. I have to settle for number two. And finally, thank you for inviting me to your confirmation.
That was very funny.
And finally, thank you for inviting me to your confirmation yesterday and asking me to speak after you were confirmed. Thank you for being a person of great dignity and integrity and someone who loved our kids and staff as if they were his own flesh and blood, and thank you for being my brother. Robo, I wish you all the best in Clifton, and I love you.
Love you.
Well, first of all, I go to school in Linden, and I have no idea about the fact that you're school board you're concerned, but I would say this, that I met you five months ago, and, um, you've been nothing but a pleasure to work with for me. You really gave me some insight on some things and helped me make, um, a decision that I was dealing with, and I thank you for that, and, uh, I thank you for inviting me yesterday.
Thank you for coming.
And you're very welcome, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, Mr. Bergano. It's been my pleasure.
And hope to see you soon.
Yes, Danny. Thank you.
She's going to go first. You know, Tracy's sort of, I can't go after Tracy. I'll be crying if I go after Tracy. Um, this is, this is really what I want to address. Uh, with a heavy heart, I'm addressing, um, Dr. Robert Tozzi today. Um, when we got the phone call that you would be leaving, I didn't re, I didn't talk to. We missed each other. He's going away on a trip, and he said, oh, I just gave this phone call, and I found out, uh, through the board members, you know, but what you had discussed, that you had made a decision to possibly move on at that time, and I said to myself, you know what? I don't believe it. If I didn't talk to them, then it's not true. And I said, uh, you know, Peter, rumors are going around, and people are asking me, and I said, no, I don't know anything. I didn't talk to him. If I don't submit a decision, it's not true, and, uh, there's a reason why I didn't reach out to him to talk to about that, because I knew it would be a hard conversation. Um, on the contrary, what, you know, maybe some, you know, some council people or some previous board members might think, or other, you know, staff, as you can see, everyone on this board I think I can speak with, um, has great respect for Dr. Robert Tozzi and truly cares for him, and, um, we are feeling the loss. Uh, when I first met Dr. Robert Tozzi, it was over at school number nine. My daughter was, uh, attending school there, and, um, like Mr. Perez always said, he was only there with us for a short time, but he did make an impact on our children. He's a wonderful principal. Um, I found a picture the other day of you giving Medina her first student achievement, and it was so touching, and, um, I wanted to tell you that you have touched their lives. You've touched, uh, the hearts of many students and parents here, and it has been my pleasure the last five months to work alongside you, and I wish you great luck in your endeavors, and that you will truly be.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you.
Love the children. Love the children. Powerful, truthful, honest words. Words everyone who is in contact with children should reply. Love the children. This is what will be embedded in me and remembered the most from the teacher, vice principal, principal, assistant superintendent, superintendent, mentor, but most of all, my friend whom I've known for thirty-plus years. Dr. Robert Tozzi, Danny, as sad as I am to see you leave, I am thankful for the time, lessons, opportunities, guidance, leadership, and love that the children, staff, and I have watched you grow and move through the ranks of Linden Public Schools. Although we sometimes didn't agree on everything, the one most important thing we always agree on is love the children. You, Dr. Robert Tozzi, will definitely be missed, but more importantly, you will be remembered for the positive impacts that you have left in both the minds and hearts of everyone in our classrooms, from the youngest pre-cate student to our most seasoned faculty member. This is definitely Linden's loss and Clifton's gain. This sitting board and community are going to be hard-pressed to find someone to fill your shoes. Thank you, thank you, thank you from the bottom of my heart for all of your advice and guidance that you have given us all over the years, and most of all, thank you for loving our children. Love you all.
Love you.
Just a short comment. Today, I had a walk into the, uh, office down at the initial today to sign some stuff in. Danny's there, and I walked with Danny and had a conversation. We had an educational conversation, uh, regarding, um, you know, this superintendentcy teaching. We had a lot of personal conversations, because we've worked together at the high school for about four, five years here, and we still laugh about the story we picked up with in high school. And, uh, but what we're talking about is, and I, and I said to him, uh, you know, in all our lives, in the time all of us left high school, our life is a series of bridges we cross over. And if you look at your own life, my life, and everyone's life, right when we were eighteen years old, we all crossed